I got the blue bird.
Good evening. I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, meeting to order, December 1st, 2020. Ask Commissioner Gillius to open us with a...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Go with me, please. Our most heavenly and merciful Father, we thank you this day for the many blessings that you have around us, the ability to meet in peace and discuss affairs of our county. We thank you for our first responders, for our military, and all the people who help us maintain a safe community. We ask you to come and lay your hands upon us, reside with us, and help us do what is going to be pleasant in your sight, and always know that as we discuss these things, your plan is perfect. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic, for which it is visible, justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners tonight. Commissioners, you have the minutes from our previous meeting of November 17th booklet. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to... Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I was concerned. All in favor, raise your right hand. I just want to welcome everyone to the meeting. I just want to... Happy birthday to Vice Chairman Gary Richardson. He looks good for 73, doesn't he? Seventy-four, seventy-four? Sorry, I missed it by a year. But anyway, we also have Kennedy Powell here. Kennedy's a senior at Lakeside. Where are you, Kennedy? Stand up, stand up. She represents Columbia County. She's our county appointee. And why don't you give everybody a quick rundown of what you're the county appointee of? Welcome. Glad you're here. Also, as far as the agenda, we have one item to add, I-3A resolution. Mr. Johnson, is that it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. With your approval, we'll add Resolution 2040, which is a request to the Georgia State Legislature.
Have I hit all the special recognitions? Have I missed anybody out there? Commissioner-to-be Don, is that you out there? Are you? Welcome. All right, we're going to jump right into the agenda. I know Ray, you wanted to speak. Ray Peters, I'm going to wait until we get to the issue, that item, then you can speak if that's all right. And then also, Sonny Jones, you wanted to speak. Wait until we get to the issue. Where are you? Okay, when we get to the issue, then we'll let you speak instead of right now. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. The items have been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this consent agenda. So if it still meets with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all with one vote.
A motion we approve, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, and I believe we're going over to Mayor Allen.
Yes, sir. I'm under unfinished business. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to rezone from R4 and C2 to S1 for property located at tax map 024064, 065 and 067 for an expansion, an existing church subject to the conditions enumerated in the October 1st, 2020 Planning Commission report.
So the motion is to approve this. Do you still want to speak? It's going to get approved as soon as we vote, I assume. But if that's the motion to approve?
He has concerns with some of the conditions.
Okay, well then come on down. Come on up. Please. Gentlemen, just please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering, the project engineer. I'll say just a few words first about what the request is, and I'll let Pastor Jones fill in blanks. So the staff was very good to work with. We appreciate them helping us work through this project. It was a little bit challenging. One of the conditions the church is asking the Board of Commissioners to give some consideration to, and that's the front minimum building line or setback. We had proposed in the zoning application for zero feet, and the staff is recommending 15 feet in order to keep the proposed building a minimum of 20 feet from an existing water line. That's about five feet off of the property line in the Washington Road right away. The right-of-way varies here, but at the narrowest point near the building, it's about 150 feet wide. And the reason that the church has asked for a zero-foot setback is because the area that they have to build the building is a fairly narrow band that's parallel to Washington Road. And if they push the building further back, the back end of the building basically is going to be off the end of a cliff. So they're going to have to bring in a large amount of dirt to do fill and probably construct some retaining walls in order to build the building further back. So I think the original building that you see there, if you can see the square here, that's an existing building. They're going to tear that building down because this is really the only flat ground on the property, although the property appeared to be rather sizable. This is the only flat ground on the property to build a building. So they'll tear down the existing building to build the new. And the church is concerned with the 15-foot setback. It's just the additional expense it's going to take to do all the earthwork and retaining walls in order to build the building. So I think they offered the... Another water utility was concerned about liability that the county would have if there was an issue with a main break, waterline being so close to the building. I think the church has agreed to sign a waiver if that would help to reduce that 15 feet. You know, every foot helps as far as the construction cost is concerned. So that's the reason that the church is asking for that front setback to be less. I'll let Pastor Jones fill in anything that he might want to add.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, happy birthday. I just want to say, when we do something, the scripture says in Luke 14:28, "To count the cost that you have sufficient, finish the job." And this would cause some hardship to complete what we want to complete because of the excess amount of land and dirt bringing into the land. The property that we have is not level. It starts going down drastically. Gary had seen the property and knows. And we're just seeing what can be done other than the setback of what it is. Could it be closer to allow us not to have so much spent? Because like I was saying, Gary, we're a small church. And we're not like the Gus National. You need 30 me, and you just ask 30 me, and you got it. But it takes time to do what needs to be done. And I'm just asking you all if you could just look at it and consider and just ask... I asked the planning commission for mercy, and they said, no, you need to ask the chairman's for mercy. So I'm asking you all for mercy. Thank you.
Phil, have you done any cost analysis on what it would take to backfill maybe to move the building back? Done any of that?
We haven't done cost on that. At this point, we don't have the actual surveys and all that information to get that specific. The church did meet with Ben and Brian Barefoot beforehand, and I spoke with Brian. You may know that he's in the trading business, but he's an engineer. And before we got involved, he had looked at it and had advised the church that he felt like the amount of earthwork that it would take would probably be cost prohibitive in terms of building that they wanted.
But we don't... There's no idea of the cost?
We don't have a number. We just know that it would be pretty...
And so how close is the water line? Matt, or speak to that?
It's approximately five foot off the right-of-way line. So it, obviously it's not the scale, but it's five foot from the riverfront line down to that green line.
Our standard policy is nothing within 20 feet?
Twenty foot, that's correct. So that's the line where the break... Not anything within 20. We don't want anything, a habitable structure within 20 feet. So currently what you have is this track here and this track here, I believe are R4. Current zoning on that track requires 110 feet setback for the minimal build line from the center line of the road. So they're approximately 23 feet roughly. If with the current zoning, they'd be 23 foot with their minimal build line. This parcel here, I believe, is C2, which is 125-foot minimal build line, which is, I believe, is where the church sits. Is that about right, Bill? So this building here sits right at the minimal build line based on current zoning. Minimal build line where they're looking to go would be somewhere in here, and I'm not to scale. So that's where the current zoning says it would be. The rezoning request of S1, they're asking you to eliminate that and go to a zero-foot setback. They can build right on the property line. But the current zoning, our water line and their buildings have proper separation. What they're asking is to go to a zero-foot setback, which then brings their building within our 20-foot offset that we require for water lines and habitable structures. Hope that kind of makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So our reason for that is if that water line, I believe that's a 12-inch water line, if it were to rupture, it could cause serious damage to the foundation of that building. That building could collapse while people are inside of it. But we don't want to have anything that would jeopardize a life for a busted water line. That's the reason we came up with that 20-foot separation.
Then you understand too, though, if you had zero setback, the county would not be responsible for any damage to the building? If something happened, if the water line broke and there was damage to the building?
You mentioned signing a waiver, but I mean, I don't...
Be totally responsible.
Is that even something feasible?
That'd be hard to do. You'd have to potentially put something of record that future owners of the property, they're going to own it for the foreseeable future, but you know, you have 10, 15, 50 years out, and something happens, maybe liable then. As your attorney, I'd recommend not engaging in that kind of potential liability, but we could certainly try to put something to cover us on record. It just wouldn't be my recommendation.
How long is this 20 requirement? Has it been forever, or did we have an issue, and that's why we came up with the 20 feet?
Yes, sir. I've been with the county 15 years. It's been in place with my tenure with the county. And I believe it was due to, exactly what we said, a water line ruptured and the front porch of a house fell off because the house was built on top of the water line. Clue to send that we need to start making sure that we don't put structures that people are going to have it up against a water line that's put in the ground by a man that's not perfect. There's a chance it could bust.
I have one question.
The current motion that made requires a 15-foot setback from the property line.
20 feet from the water line.
The other thing that that waiver gets you is the church wouldn't be... Visitors to the church aren't going to know about that waiver. Future owners, their visitors aren't going to know about what's on the real estate records. It's just, to me, it's not wise.
Also, one thing to keep in mind, when you construct your new building, if you put your building on the property line, you'll have to meet a whole new fire code. Cost of those firewalls might exceed the cost of the dirt. So something else you need to consider with your cost. Five foot off the property line, I believe it's five, pause it, five foot. If you're five foot off the property line, you're not required to fire rate your walls. If you're on the property line, building code says you have to fire rate your walls. But that's another expense that needs to be considered.
Now I'll just say this. The church's initial request was zero feet. The current recommendation from staff is every foot helps, you know. There's some ground that the... Want to reduce it by some amount, that would be helpful. Both sides.
I feel like this, if we were to do something like that, precedent of our folks coming forward, closer to the water lines moving forward.
I'll leave the president's question to our lawyer.
Yes.
I tell you, this is my district, and Sonny is a friend of mine, and I, with good faith, just can't support one under the 20 feet. And I hope Sonny don't get mad at me, but for us to go out on a limb and... Loss of life, create a problem, I don't know that we're being good stewards with a church, allowing a church to be built closer to the water line. And we know what could happen if the line blew out. I'm totally in favor of the rezoning, from what conversation that Sonny and I had today, that if they could get the rezoning and they didn't get a variance for the water line, that they would try and look at other options and like to do the rezoning, let them look at other options and see if there's some way they can work it out financially and everything else. Then some future, some other way, wanted to get a variance at that point, come back and then maybe rethink it. But I know I ramble, but want to be a good steward for the...
They can always, as you mentioned, they could always come back for a variance. If they're doing a split casing, something to protect the water line, Bill and I was talking about earlier today. I think there's things that can be done. We just need to look at them, explore them a little bit more, and come back with a little more information.
Better to pass it now as is, or table it again?
If we pass it as is, and you decide there's a better way, you have to go through this process again for the variance. If they table it, you have to have on a, in the timeline to come up with the ideas.
Give yourself a little bit of time.
I just asked a couple questions. How often do you have a water line burst?
It only takes once, sir.
It happens more than you think.
It happens a lot more than you think.
Absolutely does.
And it always happens at the worst time at the worst place.
We have them in roads all the time. All the time.
And my last question, I kind of rode around the county looking, saying, and I saw one building that was built about two, three years ago in the fire hydrants. Nine foot from the building, can't the water line to the fire hydrant burst just as good as the main water line? That caused damage?
Would. It could cause damage. It'd be, I guess it's running into the building, not vertical. I mean, pour a parallel along it. I guess our fear is that with a parallel break, you have a much wider point of impact, a point of damage versus a point into the building.
There's not a 12-inch line coming off that line to the hydrant.
There are six-inch lines going to hydrants, not 12-inch lines. The fire code also requires hydrants to be in certain locations that we can't just turn a blind eye to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, the motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution 20-31 SLD 526 for Anderson Farms, Phase 1, with an upfront pole cost of $1,123.71, annual utility cost of $3,373.20, developer contribution of $2,580. Resolution 20-32 SLD 509 for plant park for upfront pole cost of $3,277.33, annual utility cost of $1,471.68, developer contribution of $3,540. Resolution 20-33 SLD 508A Crawford Creek South, Section 7, upfront pole cost of $6,554.60, annual utility cost of $2,944.33, developer 36 cents, developer contribution of $2,280. Resolution 20-34 SLD 508 Crawford Creek South, Section B, with an upfront pole cost of $1,872.76, annual utility cost of $800.96, developer contribution of $240. Resolution 20-35 SLD 507 for Emerson at Crawford Creek, upfront pole cost of $4,680.90, annual utility cost of $2,102.00, developer contribution of $2,320. Resolution 20-36 SLD 429E for Indian Springs, Section 3, upfront pole cost of $6,086.47, annual utility cost of $2,733.12. Resolution 20-37 SLD 513C for Caleri 4, Section 4, with an upfront pole cost of $9,831.99, annual utility cost of $4,415.04, developer contribution of $2,080. Resolution 20-38 SLD 513F, Glory, Section 6, upfront pole cost of $4,371.213.71, annual utility cost of $1,892.16, and a developer contribution of $1,740. Resolution 20-39 SLD 505 for River Oaks, Phase 1A, with a total cost of $7,491.04, annual utility cost of $3,360.84, developer contribution of $2,600. Resolution 20-3 SLD 505B, River Oaks, Phase 1B, with an upfront pole cost of $7,022.85, annual utility $3,153.60, developer contribution of $2,600, inflation of streetlight.
Second. I need a drink of water.
Me too.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
We are going to find a way to simplify that, Mr. Chairman. We talked about that in our staff meeting this...
No, let's leave it like it is.
You want to leave it like it is? Leave it like it is.
Thank you for that, if you can.
I believe we found a way, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes, sir. On the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to rezone from S1 and RA to CC for a property located at tax map 0700031 and 003B, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 19th, 2020 Planning Commission report.
A second.
Matt?
For an office complex, you can see there in front of you, it's close to a half a million square feet of office space, right at Gate 6.
Mission, there was a question of... ...abilities from and how they were going to handle that.
That's correct.
Form, did they get that?
They required, this motion that you have in front of you requires them to have sewer connectivity. So that'll be through Richmond County. How they get to Richmond County, they're still working on, but Richmond County has agreed to take the sewage. It's just how they get there.
Motion is second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing PUD for an increase in the sign height allowance for tax map 082F 079, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 19th, 2020 Planning Commission report.
To allow them to have a site, a sign that exceeds our height allowance, will also double as a clearance marker for the trucks as they're leaving the site. They'll know that their clearance is right. There's a curve in it on your screen.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use or massage for tax map 082A 060.
I'll second that.
Matt?
This is actually a nurse who works the night shift, but she also has her massage license, so she'll be at her morning hours to offer a massage service. Additional use for massage at this location.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
I make a motion to approve the request of variance to Section 90-53 list of lot and structure requirements for tax map 060028A in order to reduce the required front setback to 50 feet from the center line of Dixon Drive to accommodate a utility building subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 19th, 2020 Planning Commission report.
This is pretty straightforward, looking to put a utility building in their backyard. You can see on the drawing here, they are about 41 feet off of the property line. The right-of-way for Dixon Drive is very narrow. This location was picked due to rain fields, other issues in the backyard. Kind of falls in line with the other houses along Dixon Drive as far as their setback.
Comments from any of them?
I have not heard any.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Ray, you want to say anything? Go ahead. We'll make the motion then.
Well, just for clarification, it is listed as one item. I am breaking it up into two items, though. Want me to make the first motion before? Or would you like me to make the first of the two motions beforehand? Make the first motion, then. I make a motion to approve the requested variance to Section 90-135 signs for the property located at tax map 029037E in regards to the increase in sign face area and the increase in sign height for the freestanding sign, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 19th, 2020...
November 19th, 2020 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is a request to have an increased height on a sign, and it's still signed face. I have met on site with Mr. Sterling, and Mr. Peters, Mr. Jones, we had a good meeting out there, we found a location, allow the sign to fit. This is not the actual sign that has been approved, I don't believe, I believe you cut off. Right, so, please, will you go back to the picture of the sign? There you go.
We have one, we have one split screen without, yes, we have that in our work.
Okay.
Without the brickwork. It's the first picture, actually. The Sprint number 733 in the top left corner. Well, that's it.
It's close.
Basically, the request is now just to cut X this area here out and put the Green Point logo there, so basically, it's just symmetrical all the way down, take the right hand side of the.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Second part of that item, I make a motion to disapprove the request for variance to Section 90-135 Signs for Tax Map 029 and 037E, in regards to the increase in sign face area for the canopy signage.
Actually, we are perfectly fine with withdrawing that portion of the request.
But then do we just need to vote on it?
Yeah, you'd still vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion's been made.
Second.
That's good, then.
Kick it, then.
So Ray just had to build it the way originally, which I'll discuss.
Man, you didn't have to be here.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, item 3A.
Mr. Malir. I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-48, requesting the Georgia State Legislature, Legislature, to take such action as necessary to approve the Columbia County as a single county judicial circuit.
Second.
Question?
I don't think you have to, you don't necessarily have to read the resolution, I can give a little bit of background on it if you want.
Please do.
So, this is a resolution by the Board of Commissioners, just asking the state legislature to look into the opportunity for Columbia County to be a standalone judicial circuit, there's been a lot of discussion about this in the community. We were, there was a study that was done that was called for by Senator Jones out of Augusta in March of 2018, that basically showed that Columbia County could serve as a standalone district, except for there were four judges residing in the county at that time, and four judges would be too many judges. At this particular time, there are three judges that are Columbia County residents, so, and we believe that the updated study would call for three judges, so it's a good time to be looking at this, this is something that's been discussed for many, many, many years in the past. We also were asked to run the numbers, just to kind of see, would there be a cost savings for Columbia County if we were a standalone circuit? We've always had an issue with the fact of, anytime you're in a multi-county circuit, somebody is the fiscal agent, and in this case, for the Superior Court and for the District Attorney, Richmond County is the fiscal agent for this, and they go through their budget process, even though the elected officials participate in our budget process, they're approved in the Richmond County budget process, and then we have to pay a percentage, a negotiated percentage of the, of their total budget, without really having a lot of input into whether or not they get the additional personnel and those sort of things. So it takes a little bit of power away from the governing authority, in our opinion, as it relates to budgeting. But as we looked at those numbers, we actually found that because we're well set up to have a place for these folks to reside, an office space, and with the purchase of a new building recently, we actually have some additional office space that Columbia County could save up to a million dollars if we were a standalone circuit. So, we've run those numbers, we're comfortable with that, we feel like it's very easily 500,000, but it could be as much as a million. So, basically, what we're asking in this resolution is, the Board of Commissioners is asking the judicial, I'm sorry, the legislature, to move forward with a new study, which I believe Senator Anderson's already called for last week, and then if the numbers work out, then the legislature would take a vote on this, and if it were to pass, then Columbia County would have its own circuit. There's also public safety implications here, the sheriff is very much behind the fact that having our own circuit would be in the best interest, public safety-wise, of the citizens of Columbia County. So certainly something for us to explore, this is not us breaking off, it's simply a resolution, a resolution, a resolution asking the state legislature to take whatever action is necessary to approve this, and that will be a process that will happen when they go back into session in January.
Right, and as we try to run every aspect of Columbia County, it's like a business as much as we can, it's just hard to ignore, been able to potentially save taxpayers a million dollars.
I think that's the biggest issue in front of us.
We are currently 37% of the circuit is our.
Forty, forty for the, so the District Attorney, the District Attorney and the public defender and Superior Court are different numbers, they're based on different numbers, so between 37% and 40%, depending on the budget.
What would be the timeline for the legislature taking this up? Would they do it this session?
So, yeah, so, based on this resolution, you're asking them to take this up this session, so they would go into session, I believe it's January 4th, or somewhere around that time period, they could take it up at any time, it does require judicial review, which Senator Anderson's already asked for, he's asked to have that information back by December the 4th, so if it's in, if it's favorable for Columbia County, they could move it quickly. Chairman Fleming, our local representative, is the chairman of the Judiciary Committee, this would be her, the Judiciary Committee of the House, and Chairman Fleming has been apprised of this, that this may be coming, so I would imagine that it would move pretty quickly. It's something that could be, could be done in the first few weeks, certainly because it requires the entire state legislature to take action on it, it would have to be done before crossover, so both sides could have equal shot at it. And I don't know if it would be introduced in the House or in the Senate, it could be introduced on either side.
What is the process, once both sides have taken action?
So basically, what will happen is, is, let's just say hypothetically, that it starts on the Senate side, and Senator Anderson drops a bill, if it's approved by the Senate, it'll go to the House, it goes to the House, and gets approved in the House, then it'll go to the governor for signature, as any other law does, the governor could sign it immediately, or the governor could sign it at the end of the session, depending, we could lobby the governor to move quickly if we decided we wanted to do that, but hypothetically speaking, if the governor took action on it early enough, then the formation of the judicial circuit could occur July the 1st, and if it occurred July the 1st, then the three judges that were Columbia County residents would move over into this circuit, and then it would require some additional work on behalf of the governor, as far as the District Attorney is concerned, the Public Defender's Office would have to take some action, and we'd have to do a little bit of extra work with the juvenile court, to split it off from the current Superior Court.
Have plenty of time to get that in our budget cycle, if it was something to happen or whatever.
Yes, sir, so, so we actually start our budget cycle the second week of January, so as this is moving through the state legislature, we would be budgeting accordingly, I would dare to say, because our budget takes effect July 1, and if this took effect July 1, we would know well before then, but for us, this is actually our savings, so we would be able to make sure that we budgeted appropriately, but it would really just be withdrawing the funds that we currently have in place and re-appropriating them in other places, and then whatever we need to do with the additional funds, you could actually, you know, reassign those wherever they were needed in the budget.
You just mentioned one of the other aspects to take into consideration, financially in this, requesting this change is our fiscal year, I mean, you mentioned that we're, we currently are in a circuit with three, three counties have three different fiscal years.
That's correct.
So, when Richmond County, as the fiscal agent, is sitting their budget, we're, we just set ours.
Right.
Our year just began, so we have to wait and see how things, it's.
Right, so we're six months into it, we're six months into a budget, so they'll approve their budget effective January 1, and if they gave them an increase, we're going to get an increase, our 40% is going to be more than it was last time, for the first six months, and that's unbudgeted money for us, that's a problem that we've realized ever since I've been here, we've had to make that adjustment.
Something else for the record.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I think, just to recap, and what's important for taxpayers to know, is that the oversight on the money that they contribute, 39, 40%, is going to be in the county's hands, and the oversight for our sheriff is going to be in our leadership.
Right. I think it makes sense for the governing authority here to have, say so.
Any other questions or comments? There's a motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Malir.
Day one? I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-47, authorizing the Development Authority to issue a revenue bond for Phase Two of the White Oak Business Park, to finance future economic development, to authorize the form of an intergovernmental, authorize the form of an intergovernmental contract, excuse me, and to authorize the chairman to execute any related.
Second.
There's a second.
That's two, I think it's two separate motions.
Be two separate motions. Second to that.
When off?
I can speak, please. And I'll speak to both motions. This is regarding the property, it's about around 340 acres, just to the side of the Amazon Club Car, White Oak Business Park, this is to create second phase of that park. Already have plans in place for part of it, and forward, hopefully, it'd be a thriving park, that's now even bigger. You have before you is the bond, finance the deal, finance both the property purchase and the infrastructure. Second part of the, the second motion, which you haven't read yet, restrictions on the Development Authority, property for, and sort of the relationship between y'all and them, the idea is, to the extent possible, the money from the sale of the land will pay off the bond, but at the end of the day, y'all need to know that y'all are the backstop, are guaranteeing the bonds.
Right.
And that's it.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right, oh.
One more, that's one, I want to apologize for not having this through committee, this has been a fast-moving deal, there's been a lot of moving parts, there wasn't time to do it, I apologize for that.
You're forgiven. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
For the second part of that, I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority for Phase Two of White Oak Business.
Second.
Anything else you want to say?
I think I covered it.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We have three executive session items, which I believe we can deal with in.
Ready?
Please, sir.
Make a motion to approve $65,660.34 underground lease LLC, parcel 7, $21,600 to Deborah and Patrick Spray, parcel 13, $10,780 to Sawyer Daring Enterprises LLC, parcel 15, same temporary, permanent right-of-way, and/or easements for the Horizon South.
Second.
Doctor, how far are we getting on this?
We've got 50 parcels to acquire, I think we have 39 to go.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 20-45, Declaration of Taking and Order of Condemnation for Tax Map. Crawford Farm.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve Resolution. Tax Map. 17. Horizon South Parkway Widening Park.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I guess I didn't ask for a request to be reviewed by committee, that did happen once.
We actually, actually, Mr. Allen has one to do before he leaves this board.
That's right, I got to do that, don't I?
He has a meeting left to do it.
Be public comments? We've already dealt with the executive session.
I was hoping you'd ask if we have legal issue, matters, but you didn't.
We have all legal issues everywhere, don't we?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, please adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Please adjourn.
You are not being sued, you're not doing your job.